Let's call it. Mayor, you can start with the invocation.
Okay, first of all, is there someone here from the Warwick Ministerium? Okay. Could you please give us your name and what church you're from?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Helen Cookie. My husband Neil's Cookie. I'm on staff at Hosanna. We're on Greenacre Road. And another one of our parishers is here said, you know, it's about as size of a Sunday morning service. So anyway, we got a good representation of Liddits today, so that's amazing. And I recognize a lot of you. It's wow, it's good to see you all. I love Liddits. So anyway, here we go. God, our heavenly Father and Prince of Peace, we ask and thank you for your presence here right now in this room. And we thank you for this beautiful community of Liddits. We thank you that we can stroll the streets. And thank you that you protect our homes and our streets and our community. We thank you for all of our law enforcement officers, our fire department, and all those that provide the safety and for the wisdom and the compassion for all in this community. So God, we know that there's so many decisions to be made. And I thank you that your love is the greatest gift. And that is what we can exemplify here tonight in this room. So I thank you for the leaders and I thank you for that wisdom that you will draw out tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the republic, to the republic of the Constitution.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I would just like to share with everyone, council held an executive session at 6:30 just prior to this meeting regarding some borough personnel matters. First thing on the agenda, gang, is the approval of the minutes from March 25th.
I will move to approve. Second?
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved. All right, moving down into the presentations in which I believe most of you are here for tonight. Mayor, do you want to take over?
Sure. Jared? First of all, it's my pleasure to swear in Jared as our new chief police. I know Jared for a long time, when I was on council, he was a junior firefighter. He's been in Liddits his entire life. He, I guess you could say bleeds Liddits. And we're so pleased and happy to have him as our new chief. So without any further ado, could you please, I'll swear in now. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Jared Hawn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I.
That I.
As the police chief for the Liddits Borough Police.
As the police chief for the Liddits Borough Police.
Department.
Department.
Will support, obey, and defend.
Will support, obey, and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Pennsylvania Constitution.
And the Pennsylvania Constitution.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Borough of Liddits.
And the Borough of Liddits.
And I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of the office with fidelity.
Discard. Of the office with fidelity.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Are sworn in. Congratulations.
Guessing you have several others you want to get some photos with, or are you planning to do that afterwards?
We can do it downstairs. I know you guys have a full agenda.
Okay.
So appreciate.
We do, and I have, if you don't mind, I'd like to just take a moment. First off, actually, just to thank outgoing Chief Nye. Your leadership and dedication and commitment to this, to the Liddits Borough and your love of this community are commendable. And we are so grateful for you and the service that you provided. We want to thank you also for providing this council with two truly exceptional candidates to fill your shoes. And we think that speaks to your leadership, the prior leadership of the Liddits Borough Police Department, and also the dedication of the entire current Liddits Borough Department. They're two wonderful candidates. And I'd like to take a moment just to highlight some of Jared's background and history for those of you who may not be familiar with him. Jared is a Liddits native and a lifelong Liddits resident, graduate of Warwick High School and a graduate of Temple University Police Academy. He is entering his 22nd year with the Liddits Borough Police Department. He was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2014, where he supervised a platoon of patrol officers. In addition to field supervisor responsibilities, Jared also authored agency policies, procedures, and strategic initiatives along with other operational and administrative assignments. Jared is currently enrolled at Wilmington University, pursuing a master's degree in administration of justice with a concentration in leadership and administration. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Wilmington University and an associate's degree in human services from Elizabeth Town College. He's a graduate of the Northwestern University Center for Public Safety School of Police Staff and Command, where he studied leadership, human resources, employee relations, organizational behavior, applied statistics, planning and policy development, and budgeting and resource allocation. Additionally, he's a graduate of the FBI National Academy Associates Leadership Certification Program, Pennsylvania State Police Leadership Development Program, and has completed the Penn State University Justice and Safety Institute's Police Executive Development Program, Police Supervisory and Service Training Program, and Leadership and Command Program. He is a member of the Lancaster County Chiefs of Police Association, where he currently serves as chairperson of the Lancaster County Joint Hiring Consortium and vice-chairperson of the Police Advisory Board to Lancaster Countywide Communications 911. He's also a member of the Central Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, where he serves as a member-at-large of the Executive Committee and chairperson of the Training Committee. He's also a member of the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, the Pennsylvania Police Accreditation Coalition. In both organizations, he serves as accreditation assessor, team leader, and accreditation assessor. He's a member of the Elizabeth Town College External Advisory Board for the Elizabeth Town College Municipal Police Academy. He also provides professional consultation services in the area of law enforcement policy recommendations. In 2010, Jared became the first police officer in Lancaster County to be certified as a drug recognition expert and has been qualified as an expert witness on 10 occasions. He is currently credentialed as a drug recognition expert instructor by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. In 2012, Jared was named as the Lancaster County Outstanding Police Officer for the Year by the Lancaster County Chiefs of Police Association. Since 2012, Jared has served as the Liddits Borough Police Department's accreditation manager, responsible for the maintenance and compliance with the law enforcement accreditation standards established by the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission of the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association. In 2023, the Liddits Borough Police Department was awarded the top-tier level of accreditation, premier status. The Liddits Borough Police Department is the first borough police department in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to achieve this top-tier status. Jared also, in addition, all of that y'all, maintains his membership, which I believe has been since high school, with the Liddits Fire Company and has held leadership and administrative roles in that department as well. Jared currently lives in the Liddits area with his wife and two young daughters. And I'm going to insist that you continue to give them top-tier levels as chief of police. Jared, thank you for your service thus far with this department, and we look forward to next year.
Can I make a comment?
You absolutely.
Now, just, it's humbling to see so many people here. It's really an honor, my end, first and foremost, my family, my parents, parent-in-laws, my wife and the two daughters. Anybody who's an officer in this room knows that you could not do this job without the support of your family. So thank you to them for the holidays that were celebrated on alternative dates, the missed meals, the missed events. But again, that's nothing different than any other officer in this room and what their families sacrifice and contribute towards their departments and their communities as well. To the members of the agency who have supported me all along, who have reached out and been there to help with the transition every step of the way. Community members, whether they're people in this room tonight or people that have reached out at different points, residents, business leaders, civic groups. Everybody has been very supportive and certainly appreciate that. Chief Nye, as you mentioned, certainly set up an agency that focused on leadership and developed next generation of leaders, and I certainly intend to continue that. All the colleagues in the room from across the Commonwealth. I appreciate them being here. I've learned so much with and from them. And to have you guys here is certainly an honor to me. And to council, I appreciate the trust and support and the mayor and staff leadership of the borough. I understand this is a great responsibility, humbled by it. I eagerly accept and I'm enthusiastic. I take this position with no reservations, and I look forward to the continued success of the department and the community. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. I was expecting everybody to continue to stay for the next. We're going to pause for a minute because I am sure several of you may leave.
How are you, Jim?
Yeah, it seems important to our faces that, huh? Yeah. Trying to pick out, but it was kind of hard. Like, I knew.
All right, I believe that is, everybody else is here for the rest of the agenda, correct? All right, all the way to the end, right? All right, moving on to the second item under presentations, I'm going to turn this over to Mary.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to invite Jim Winger from Dirk and Edson up to present the petition for rezoning of the property on North Walnut Street. Following your presentation, Jim, we'll have an opportunity for council to ask questions. And then we'll open the floor to the public for your comments and questions. So I'll let you take it from there. And if you wouldn't mind, just introduce yourself and your creden-, not your credentials, but your location.
Sure. Jim Winger, I'm a principal with Dirk and Edson, just a half a block down the street. Been in town 85 years. My wife is a native, I am not. I've only been here 40 years. And I've learned that you're not a native unless you've been born here. So anyway, I'm sorry.
You said you've been here 85. You don't look 85.
No. The firm's been here.
Eighty-four maybe, but not eighty-five.
So I'm here tonight on behalf of Walnut Place, who purchased the property on North Walnut Street, north of Walnut and east of North Walnut. The lot was created in 2022 by St. Luke's Church. The parcel is currently zoned R2 and is one acre in size. The property is surrounded on three sides by residential uses, and the zoning that currently reflects the RA residential uses. And I say that in that the properties to the south are predominantly duplex units and zoned R2, but their lot sizes are actually generally smaller than your current R2 zoning permits. The properties to the west are townhouses. They are zoned R2, which are not currently permitted in your RA zoning district. The townhouses and condos to the north are zoned RA, so would be permitted by their current zoning designation. The property to the east is the remaining parcel of St. Luke's, and it is still, is currently owned, zoned R2. The property is located, obviously, within the designated growth boundary of Liddits Borough and the surrounding region. The recently approved joint comp plan that actually you did with Warwick Township last year gave the recommendation that the future land use actually be high-density classification for both this parcel, the condos to the north, the townhouses to the west, which would be the RA zoning, not the R2 zoning. So on behalf of the petitioner, now that the comp plan's done, we would request that the property be rezoned from R2 to RA. That allows it to be developed in a way that would match the surrounding uses, both to the west, north, and south. It's in close proximity to the core downtown, so it's actually a walkable property. So folks don't have to drive into town like you would if this was on the edge of town or near Warwick Township. The petitioner really initially was looking to create townhouses similar to what's across the street. Right now it's R2. It could be six duplexes. As RA, it could be 10 or 11 townhouses. So it's not a huge change. It just, the building style would fit into the surrounding neighborhoods.
Jim, could you just repeat what you just said there? It could be six.
I'm sorry?
Just repeat the numbers you just said. It could be six duplexes.
As R2, you could do six duplexes.
As R2.
As R2.
Okay. And as RA.
And as RA, we could do 10 or 11 townhouses, depending how things lay out.
Are you counting duplexes as one for two v-, two homes? Like a duplex, I mean.
It would be three sets.
Three sets of two. Gotcha.
Okay, sorry.
Yep.
If it is done as townhouses, we probably will put an alley in the back and have parking pads or garages in the back, as well as access for the church to still have emergency exits out the back for special events if they still have this. The Lancaster County Planning Commission reviewed the application. They feel the rezoning increases opportunity for great housing diversity, which we've heard a lot about in the comp plan preparation. There's not much workforce housing available in the Borough of Liddits. So we actually are finding people living in Ephrata and driving to Liddits, living in Mannheim and driving to Liddits because there's just not enough housing here to accommodate our current employers. It would be an efficient use of space, provide more tax space as our public services continue to increase in cost. To the north, actually at Sussex and Amberly, there's roughly 46 units. Homestead, which is the townhouses to the west, is 26 units. I know there's been a lot of concern about putting an apartment building up. That was not the original intent. I know there's comments about traffic in the neighborhood and it's going to lower values. I actually lived in the townhouses across the street, right out of college. I found it as a great housing opportunity for young people before they could afford a home in town. And I actually know people currently living there who are retired and are enjoying that space in their retirement life. So although there may be concerns about the type of people who may live in townhouses, I don't think that should be a reason not to rezone the parcel. I'm open to questions.
Jim, I think you're aware that the Borough Council was in the process of pursuing a rezoning of that and a couple of other parcels within the borough already. And we've been having discussion at Planning Commission meetings for about the past six months with a lot of discussion. I guess you've now come in with a petition for this. Can you just say a little bit about why you felt it was necessary to go ahead and petition council to make this change in advance of the larger change and a change to this specific lot?
Primarily.
Very critical factor for your client.
There's not a huge deadline. We just weren't given a firm schedule as to when borough was going to progress on the rezoning. So we decided to bring it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a question. You said workforce accommodations to allow people in the workforce to live there. As we know, Rock Liddits is not far away. They're expanding. And I know they're looking for places for people to live. Which of these zoning would accommodate the workforce people better?
I don't know that I can answer which could accommodate it better. I think the question is providing as many units as we can efficiently on this land without being negative to the surrounding area. If that makes sense.
What would be the total number of units that?
As I noted, probably 10 or 11 townhouses compared to six that's in duplexes, three sets of two.
How much green space would be available?
I can't.
Okay.
I can't say that at this point. I don't know.
That'll happen, the land development.
Just to clarify for those here, as well as for council, the rezoning is only one step in a process. And that there would be future submissions for the land development process that would have to go through the Planning Commission, come to council for approval. And that's where things like, if the developer was not able to meet the current code, all of the setback requirements, stormwater management, parking, all of those requirements, then that's when they would petition for those kinds of changes. So tonight is only the first step of changing the zoning to allow for a higher density on that particular lot. So a few more units, a few more housing units on that lot.
Hey, Jim.
Go ahead, Ken.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Hey, good evening, Jim. This is Ken. I'm in eastern Washington. Thank you for your presentation. Jim, could you just elaborate a minute or two about how you see parking for these new buildings? Do you think it would require any parking on North Walnut Street? Or would the plan encompass parking for those duplexes or townhomes?
I think no matter what we do, people like to park out front of their unit. So I think by default, you're going to have parking on the street. The 34-foot wide street is very similar to most streets in Liddits. I live on Liddit Street, and the width is 34 feet. If you go one block away, there's cars parked on both sides.
And Ken, kind of as Mary was stating, a lot of that will be outlined in the land development process and not so much, you know, even in this zoning.
And even if it was duplexes, people probably will still park on the street because people like to win their front door, even though we would provide parking in the rear.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
A lot of that is prescribed in our.
Correct.
Land development ordinance.
Jim, can you clarify the lot size? I've seen two different numbers, and I believe, I don't know if Elijah, if you can speak to that as well.
So the 1.56 is what I pulled from the county's parcel viewer. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's correct. But that was the resource that I had.
It's 1.0.
Okay.
Okay.
1.04 acres.
Okay.
1.039, to be exact.
Any other questions from council before we open it to the?
I had one. Since we have been petitioned now for this, instead of having it come through the strategic plan process, are we going to take the opportunity to rezone those parcels that are currently not within, not correctly, not correct use for the zoneage? So the apartments to the west and the south?
Right, very good question, Christine. So the future land use map, which is, we have a map over here if anybody wants to look at it. And I welcome you to come up and look at it while we're discussing this, if you'd like to. The future land use map, which was adopted and approved by the borough as part of the adoption of a regional comprehensive plan. So that's the plan for our future that we, for the region, that was adopted last year. It does identify additional rezonings around this property. We're not prepared to do that tonight because the obligations related to notification and, really, it's the notification requirements. We're just, we're just considering the petition for this one parcel. We are continuing the rezoning discussion at Planning Commission every month. So come, Planning Commission is a really important place to come. I'm just going to emphasize that. That is where the real discussion occurs around what's going to happen with development in our community. They get into the nitty-gritty details there. They are continuing to look at not only amending the map. So it changes, the map amendment changes the zoning for a particular parcel, in this case, or group of parcels. But they're also looking at some of the text that is within that RA district, that RA zone, to make sure that it is going to be, that any development that occurs on some of the larger parcels that are slated for redevelopment. One significant tract that some of you are probably familiar with is up on Locust Street. The other is down between Cedar and Broad, south of Fourth Street. There's a big vacant lot behind the Liddits Manor Apartments on Sixth Street and behind the condos on, or townhouses that are along South Cedar Street. So we are looking at zoning text amendments there because we want to be very careful that any development that happens is consistent with and takes into consideration what's already there around it. So those conversations will continue at Planning Commission, and I expect they'll be to us with something to consider within the next couple of months.
Thank you very much.
But this is just for this one particular parcel, and it's only a map amendment.
Thank you. So if we did nothing about this, they could develop this into single-family homes and duplexes, no matter what we did. Okay.
They could do six.
So long as it complies with the ordinances.
Okay.
Yes.
Good, good point of clarity.
Right.
Mary, you mentioned that there's other zoning changes going on. Why would we go ahead with this one until we do the other one? And there would be more of a comprehensive approach to finding housing for, in a more density way?
Well, that is because we have been petitioned and asked to do it. They, you know, one of the things that can drive up costs of building housing is extended development plan review processes and things like that. So this is a very small parcel. It's one acre. And I think the combined acreage of the other lots is somewhere around 20 acres? A little less than 20 acres. So we actually looked at this within the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission looked at this. They considered it. They considered whether the text amendments that are being considered would have a significant impact on the rezoning of this particular parcel. And they didn't see that it would because of the size of this, of this lot. It's a very small impact. So the Planning Commission's recommendation was for approval. So I'll just say, the Planning Commission looked at this and recommended that we move forward with it. I'll also just add that I have lived in communities right down the street here. I had a property owner tear down a house and build a parking lot right in my neighborhood. It is hard to see things like this happen in your community. It is hard to see things like this happen in your community. I had it happen in another community that lived in it, and I fought it for three years. And we ended up with development, but because I was at the table during the land development process, it turned out much better, much better. So, I have been saying every month at this council meeting, come to the Planning Commission meeting next week because this is being discussed. And, you know, I've been, those of you who are concerned about this, I've been in your seat. I've been in your seat. So, with that, unless there's any other questions, I'd like to open it up to the public. Tenaya, did you have anything?
Not at this point.
Before we go to the public?
I've got one, Mary. I'm just trying to, Jim, I've got pulled up the zoning ordinance. I'm trying to find the simplest way to compare the differences between R2 and RA. I mean, you've obviously studied it more than I have in this. Could you give, other than you gave the example, the 12, duplexes, and 11, what's the, give me like the three bullet point summary of what's the differences between R2 and RA?
The key is singles and duplexes versus allowing townhouses. That's really the difference between the two zones.
Okay.
I believe apartments is.
Oh, yeah. And apartments are permitted.
Apartments is the one key component that's not allowed in the R2 district. And the purpose of the RA district is to promote the high-density residential neighborhood, which is what exists there now.
Could it be any, could it be any more than a two-story building?
There's height restrictions within each of the, I mean, I think it's.
I think the height in both districts is 35 feet.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, you can't be putting.
Three floors if it was an apartment building. But as we talked to Planning Commission, they would not look highly upon that. So, if you look out on Lincoln, a lot of the duplexes actually have like a third-story mansard roof with dormers, so something more along that line. So, it's not like what is a block away, which is very imposing.
Okay.
There's like some, again, I'm trying to quickly do like a side-by-side. There's some difference with side yard, rear lot.
Yeah, of course, there's setback differences, right.
Okay.
And it's just, as a reminder, because Planning Commission got held up on this too, with new development, the form-based code applies.
Yep.
Which has the similar ones. So, the chart that's in there wouldn't necessarily apply for new development in this district.
Right.
So, we'll entertain questions, comments from the public. We did receive two written correspondence for, and we can touch on those after you all come. I invite you to come up to the mic, introduce yourself, please state your address, and we'll welcome your questions and comments.
Good evening. My name's Emma George. I live at 51 West Lincoln. My property abuts. The property in question that we're talking about tonight. Thank you for explaining the process, and I understand this is one of many conversations that will happen regardless of the outcome of the petition. I'll amend my comments because I'm sure my neighbors have similar concerns about parking, the green space, et cetera. When I called the council about a month ago now, I was told, which I understand is slightly different, Jim, than what you have expressed tonight, the proposals under discussion were for apartments and condos. I understand that's not exactly what we presented tonight. My concern with going forward with this petition is the precedent that this sets for putting in apartments, which would be deeply out of character with the neighborhood that we are currently in. That is a neighborhood that values community. I am a fairly new resident to it, and I can tell you, it is one of the most welcoming communities I've ever lived in. And I think adding and setting a precedent of high-density residential, a month ago, I was told it could be up to 18 units, is concerning for the community. I've spoken to almost everybody on Lincoln Ave., and I can say not many of them were in favor of this. Development generally, but especially the rezoning of it. So, my largest concern, I'd say to the council, and I'll give my time over to everybody else, is the precedent this sets for building out of character with the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, members of the council and fellow residents. My name is Reed Dame, and I also live at 51 West Lincoln Avenue. I stand before you to strongly urge you to deny this petition to rezone the property from its current R2 residential designation to the RA high-density residential. My first concern regards traffic congestion and parking. A fundamental consideration in any zoning decision, especially one permitting higher density, is ensuring safe and adequate ingress and egress, how vehicles may access the property. Rezoning to RA would permit a high-density development, which would dramatically increase vehicle volume and bring unreasonable traffic to North Walnut Street, as well as the alley behind the houses on West Lincoln Avenue, which is Middle Lane. Furthermore, such developments lead to potential parking overflow onto the streets, congesting roads, and impacting existing residents. Secondly, an increase in density brings more noise and chaos. High-density apartment buildings inherently generate more constant activity, ambient noise, and light pollution, disturbing the relative peace and tranquility enjoyed by residents in this established neighborhood. This fundamentally alters the day-to-day experience of living in our neighborhood and homes. Zoning is established as a tool to allow the government to control the development of land and ensure the public is satisfied with their community and to protect existing property from destruction or devaluation. This brings the fundamental question, who is the constituency this council and the Planning Commission? Who is the Borough government run on behalf of? Is it the current residents of Littit's Borough, whose quality of life, property values, and neighborhood character are directly in line with this decision? Let us be clear. Approving this rezoning represents a direct transfer of value. The potential additional profit from increased density sought by the developer who purchased this, knowing the existing R2 limitations, would come at the cost of our quality of life, paid for by increased traffic, noise, and diminished neighborhood character, and the potential, although theoretical, harm to our property values experienced by those of us who currently actually live here. Upholding the existing R2 zoning protects the residents you are elected or appointed to serve. Approving the RA rezoning prioritizes developer profit over the established community. This choice reflects and represents whose interests come first. Please represent your constituency, the residents of this Borough, and protect the integrity and livability of our neighborhood. I strongly urge you to vote no on this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Ruckel, I live at 15 West Lincoln Avenue. I assume that the access and egress from any development of that land will be on the current driveway or at least out onto North Walnut Street, which is a problem in that exiting from North Walnut Street now, if you're trying to turn left, that's east on West Lincoln Avenue, is already very difficult at times. I haven't had an accident there, but I don't know anyone in Sussex or Amberly or the apartments who has not had a close call there, partly because the yellow no-parking curb paint on the north side of West Lincoln is faded yellow, probably too short, and is often ignored. It's barely visible in spots. Also because the speed limit on that section of road is 35 miles an hour and probably should be 25 until after North Walnut. So, my concern is, again, about traffic congestion and traffic safety and parking because any time, other than broad daylight, most of the spaces on North Walnut are taken now by the apartment folks. So, it's going to get more congested than it is, and right now, it's currently probably at its limit in that sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Steffi, 7 Sussex Place, back past this property. And you just have to ask yourself, I know there's a lot of stipulations coming in the future, but wrap your head around high density on a dead-end street. You know, that property, that street dead-ends just past the property line. The rest is our driveways, and I think it's going to be, where are they going to turn around when they park out on Walnut Street? Think about that. And like Tom said, it is horrendous, that intersection at West Lincoln and Walnut. That yellow line has to be moved way back and needs to be enforced because it is, it's a crapshoot pulling out there on a good day, on a good day, because everybody's going faster. But just try to think, high density on a dead-end street. And, you know, it's not the same as our, they said, you know, everybody else has, you know, this zoning, you know, like our property, Sussex and Cardiff. It's not the same because we have huge driveways, huge streets per se. Is there going to be a street in here that you can actually bring a fire truck in? You can bring a fire truck in our streets, but can you bring it in their streets that they're going to have? They're not going to have a street at all. Think about that, you know? We can do it from other places, but, you know, high density and a dead-end, dead-end street don't work. You know it's not going to work. So, let's just stop it now, stop the nonsense, and don't have to worry about the zoning later. Don't have to worry about the decisions later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Diller, Number 1 Sussex. I've been there for, I've owned a place for five years. So, does everybody in council know in a two, in a two-block footprint, how many high-density units there are? Two blocks now. 380 already. And we're talking about pretty much the same intersection as what Mike talked about and what Tom talked about. 380, if you count, well, I don't have to go through them. You guys can count them. And I guess from what I'm hearing is, the buildings will be built right up against the sidewalk. Is that correct?
Like a city street.
They'll be just like a city street going back, so which the runoff basin would have to be in the back then.
Parking.
The runoff drain basin would be where?
Drain.
Okay. Okay. Well, the traffic that was talked about by Mike and Tom is just, is horrendous right now, and, you know, this is just going to add to it. If it's pushed up on the street, I was a little confused when Jim said they want to park in front of their house, so it'll be parking on the street. You should see that street now. It's parked full. It's parked full now. And I thought maybe it'd be parking. It's worse than what I thought. If you're going to shove up the street, it'll just be like the city street with parking. And like Mike said, a dead end behind that. So, that's something y'all need to consider. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Sid Harne. I live at 1 Amberly Way. And my question is, you just said it's minute. So, why do you have to mess with it? There's just a little lot there. Kids play in there. Parents have played with their kids in there. There's no, I just, you just said there's a place for 20 acres. Can't these houses go on that 20 acres? I'm just, I'm right there. I'm the first one. So, I'm going to be the one that gets blocked. So, alls I'm going to see is houses or whatever's in there. But the way it is now, it's, it's quiet, you know? And it's probably the only place left in Littit's that's quiet. And there's enough traffic already. Why are you bringing more and more people in again? I just, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sid.
My name is Tracy Wise. I live in the homestead of townhouses, apartments. I just recently moved there. And I moved there because I have a beautiful, beautiful sight of that open green space and those 13 historic pine trees. What would happen to those?
They won't happen, yeah.
Yeah.
And not actually getting.
That is, that is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Barb Harne. I live at 1 Amberly Way. My concern is the trees coming down. We're already pushing out the wildlife, and I, for one, would hate to see that go. Plus, we just need the green. It was mentioned about housing for workers who are commuting. I'm fortunate enough to work 10 minutes from my home. Everybody that I work with travels 45 minutes or more. So, to me, that, that's a moot point. People travel for their jobs. So, I, I would ask also, too, that you would not change the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Cunliffe. My daughter lives at 9 Amberly Way. I think my question is mostly for you, Jim. You said 10 or 11 townhouses. Is that single occupancy townhouses? Is that two-story, like when you say a townhouse? So, they're going to have two different owners or two, one?
One.
Okay. Are they renters?
Just like what they're, like, what's.
Okay. So, none, no owner occupied residences. And I, I agree with Barb. I'm sorry, Claire doesn't have enough apartments or something in the area. He has plenty of land. I don't see why he can't build some housing there. But to try and accommodate on these small parcels we have in Littit's, so people don't have to drive from Ephrata to work at Maravian Manor or something, to me, is not valid. It's just not. So, you drive from Ephrata. Well, it is. I mean, we're all saying the same thing. And parking, you know they're all going to have cars. I mean, that's, that's a given. You can walk to town, that's fine. They're not, they're obviously going to have to drive to work. So, we are going to have at least, at least 10, 11, 12, how many cars, you know, families have each. So, I agree, rezoning, I'm against it as well.
Thank you.
I live at 405 South Broad Street, and my daughter Maggie lives at 9 Amberly. Yeah, that doesn't hold water the worker bit. I mean, we got all that land at Rock Littit's, Maravian, look at all that land that they've taken. We have Breezy Point south of town. We have the apartments in the park. I mean, how many rentals do we need? Unfortunate and unfortunate, I grew up in Cherry Hill in the 60s and 70s, a suburb of Philly, and I see what happens when this development just goes and goes and goes. And it's hard to stop. But it goes, you couldn't pay me enough to live back where I grew up because it's just overgrown, too many buildings. It's just, and I like greens, green spaces. I've been here on planning meetings. I went to List Track. I went to some other meetings. And I'm a tree hugger, so I like green space. But I know in our society, we can't stop progress. We can't stop building. But I definitely don't want to see it go high-density. At least I like to keep it lower, residential, and then I'd like to be part of a process of how we deal with the parking, the construction, what's going in there? Is it sustainable housing? Is it rentals? We have enough rentals in Littit's, so we don't need more rentals. Portable housing is about owning property, not rentals. So, that, we're not really ticking that box off either. So, I'm definitely opposed to the high-density.
Thank you.
My name is Preston Stauffer. I live at 35 West Lincoln Avenue. My. Hello, council. My name is Preston Stauffer. I live at 35 West Lincoln Avenue. My property butts up through the alley. I've lived on West Lincoln Avenue my whole life. And it bothers me to see the green space go. Year after year, I've seen families come and watch the fireworks. Year after year, I've seen families come and show picnics. I'm getting ready to have my first child, my first daughter. And hearing that the alley wants to be built behind the new buildings there to come into, the alley behind my house concerns me. I grew, learned to ride my bike there. And it concerned me for the traffic on the lane and for the people of Sussex and Amberly Way as well. My grandma lives back there. And yeah, it's, it's a nightmare back there. Traffic is bad now. And I can't imagine seeing what 10 or 11 more places being put in there. We like the peacefulness. We like the greenery. I feel for the people that live on the south side of West Lincoln, when they build all the apartments back there and they rip all the trees down. I used to play Warwick Little League. I won the warm over day tournament over there. And I can never tell my daughter where I used to play because it doesn't exist anymore. So strongly, strongly oppose what the proposal is. And to just keep it green and keep Liddits peaceful and quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Dave Carson, 220 East Sixth Street. I don't have a dog in this fight, so to speak, but I'm here to support the people that live close by. As you may know, I had a situation and still do, where I had some development across from my house. And I hope this council is more concerned about the people that lived there for 30 some years, maintaining their lifestyle and their situation. That to me is most important. Okay, thank you. And I wish the council would have the support that I had, give the support that I would have gotten the support that this people are getting.
Anybody else? Elijah, we did receive some written correspondence from people who weren't able to be here. Can you speak to what the issues were that were raised?
Essentially, it was similar to what's been raised tonight, traffic, parking, removal of the trees. The one thing that was particularly noticeable for me is the site distance issue at West Lincoln. Obviously, that is an issue regardless of whether this goes forward. We did review it with the borough engineer, and they do have recommendations for that. For the gentleman that spoke about the speed, it is a PennDOT road. Unfortunately, we can't set the speeds on PennDOT roads. And we've tried to reduce the speeds on PennDOT roads in the past, particularly West Orange. And we're told that essentially, there was no justification for that. So that is a very difficult thing to do. So we do look, we do have a recommendation for painting. And it will involve the removal of four spaces on West Lincoln to accommodate the required site distance. But that's something that we are looking into regardless of what happens tonight. But other than that, the correspondence has essentially covered the points that have been covered tonight.
Counsel, anything else?
So if nothing was done today, regardless, I'm just trying to clarify this, the green space could be gone, no matter what?
Most of, I was going to share, I'm trying to limit my voice here. But the parking, the trees, the traffic, it can happen regardless of what we do tonight. They could, they would have to develop under the R2
Right.
requirements.
Which would still put
But a lot of the things that are talked about tonight, and for those of you that have not, I was in planning commission for 20 years. A lot of that stuff that's discussed tonight is not relevant to this decision. It will be once it goes through the land development process through planning commission, setbacks and trees and number of parking spaces, size of parking spaces, you know, a lot of that stuff. This is just really setting the, I'll say the biggest factor is the, the amount of units that can be built within the space.
If we all said no, they could still build there regardless.
They could still develop six duplex.
At least six homes, right?
Can you come up to the mic, please?
You said there's no difference?
No, I didn't say there's no, 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 I didn't say there's no difference.
On traffic?
What I'm saying is traffic is covered within the land development, not the zoning ordinance. That's all I was saying.
Right. But when you rezone, how many are going to go in? And if you don't rezone, there's numbers. There's numbers.
I'm not saying there's no difference. What I'm saying is
Well, you, you did say there's really no reason because of traffic.
I'm just trying to explain, traffic is something that's covered in land development.
Right. When you re, when you rezone to double the
Right, right. So they would have to
The damage is done.
Yeah, I'm just saying that that, when they have to do their traffic counts, and they have to go through their traffic engineering, it's through the land development process. So yes, they'll have to submit the calculations on R2 or R3, whatever, I'm sorry, R2 or RA as whatever they're developing.
So you're saying it does matter tonight whether you make a decision on
It'll, it'll affect the number of traffic count.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So Mary, this area is already designated as a density area, correct?
That's correct.
And so this would add to that. Why would we want to add to it if it's already designated as a density area?
Well, let me, let me just ask, what, what do you mean by
The future zoning has it identified as a
Yeah. The Sussex and Amberly developments are already zoned RA. They are already high density zoning. The apartments, homestead across the street are also high density units, but they were built before the, before the zoning ordinance was put in place to restrict that. So, and the, and the duplexes that are along Lincoln are more of a medium density. We don't have a lot of, how do I want to say, between the, the zones that allow for duplexes, but the single family homes, they are a much less dense. But where you've got duplexes and the townhomes that exist in that neighborhood, you live in a high density neighborhood. You already live there. So I would just ask you to think about the impacts on the peace and tranquility. Are your neighbors already contributing to lack of peace and tranquility? Because honestly, the people that would be moving in are going to be living in housing like the housing you're living in now. We have, yeah, go ahead, Bob, come on up. My old neighbor.
That all made true, yes. There's a difference between rentals and owned units. And we all know that. The HOA is out here, Sussex, Amberly, Cardiff, which is behind us. I don't think any Cardiff guys or people are here. We don't allow rentals. There's a difference. And you all know that. And now we're letting rentals in. And everyone sitting here, if you live where we did, you'd be out here, you wouldn't be sitting there, guaranteed. And you know it. None of you would want this if you lived back there. Please take that into consideration, because this is what we're faced with. That's enough. Goodbye.
Yeah, I'm, I am not going to agree to the characterization of renters. If anybody here was not ever a renter, raise your hand. Was anybody here ever not a renter? I mean, most people have rented. People who rent, rent for a variety of reasons.
People who rent have a lower investment.
I will not agree with that.
All, all there's no HOA, at a certain level, won't allow rental. That's been the HOA because of that. Because properties aren't maintained as well in a rental. There's no property.
Okay. I, I won't concur to that. But it's, you're wel, you're welcome to your opinions on that. We are going to have a presentation shortly on rental inspection program that the borough runs in order to make sure that we don't have problems with our rentals here. And I encourage all of you to stick around for that presentation. I, I will not concur to that. You need to come up to the mic, please. We have people online participating, and they can't hear you if you're not using a microphone. Thank you, Lisa.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify with you. You had said, when I had been to a, a planning meeting, I had asked about the number of rentals we had in Liddits. And you really didn't have a number at that point. Do you know now how many homes, how many are there?
It's about a third of all units are rentals.
Okay.
So two thirds are owner occupied.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, come on up.
Hi, my name is Kathleen O'Hara. I live at 20 Cardiff Court. I just want to clarify, if six duplexes go in there, are there going to be rentals or are there going to be owner occupied?
So we cannot, right, we cannot require one to be rental or owner occupied. We can essentially require the type of housing. And then it is up to the owner whether they want to rent it or sell it. If they rent it, we have the rental inspection program. But we as a government can say, we'll approve you for condos, but we're not going to approve you for apartments. Condos and apartments are essentially the same thing.
Right. So, so the, at homestead, they've been referred to as townhouses, but they're apartments. Then they've been apartments for 50 years.
They're rentals.
Yes, they are. So that's why I'm just trying to figure out what
So it's going to be the same thing. It's a term, we're getting kind of hung up on some terminology. I can look up in the, does it have the definitions in the zoning ordinance?
I guess my point is, the homestead apartments, from my perspective, are not a problem. I walk back and forth through there 15 times a week.
Right.
I, that's all.
Are those rent, I, I don't know, are those rentals?
Yes.
Let me just, I just want, okay, townhouses being the construction type. I just want to, I want to clarify one thing, a question for you, Jim. I'm flipping back and forth between, so an R2, it says, single family detached dwelling, single family semi detached dwelling. And then obviously, a bunch of other uses that are not relevant to residential. And then if I go, bear with me as I'm scrolling down, RA, again, single family detached, single family semi detached, and then it has apartments, and then it has condos and townhouses. So apartments, condos, and townhouses are not permitted in R2. There, I mean, therein lies, I think, the biggest part of the discussion tonight is those three uses as, again, I, I would love to see like a side by side of each of the permitted uses. And that's what I'm trying to do here as I'm scrolling back and forth. But I think those are the three key things. Because everything else I see are gardening, public parks, essential services, structures, animal shelters, home occupations, everything else I believe is up there. So the three key things for council to think about is the biggest difference between R2 and RA, in my opinion, is you're adding apartments, condos, and townhouses. You can still do single family semi detached and single family detached in R2.
How many single homes could you fit on a one acre?
I would have to have an engineer lay that, lay it out. But I honestly don't know without, you got to think about the building setbacks. You got to think about the parking requirements. You got to think about the stormwater requirements. There's a lot of things you got to put into the factoring. So without asking an engineer to do that, I couldn't do that. But I, I think those are the, those are the key differences. By going to RA, you're going to allow apartments, condos, and townhouses, which I do not see in the R2.
Apartment house or apartment building is defined as a building designed and constructed to contain three or more dwelling units. So townhouses could be an apartment building.
Yes.
It, we're talking about an architectural style or type. It's all meant to be, so the question was, is this all not intended to be developed as apartments? Is that your question, Bob?
But to that question, we, we don't know that right now. I mean, we don't have a, we don't have a plan before us tonight. Again, that's, as Mary referenced, and I've said, that's what happens in land development. We don't know. We don't, we don't know what it's going to look like. At this point, they could, you know, people could come before us with any property and subdivide it. But that's a step that happens later beyond this. This is simply defining the use or the loud, the permitted uses.
But, but the land development process would be tied to either R2 or RA. And they're, that they're two different processes.
So they would, yes.
Yeah.
It would, that defines the zoning. They still might have to go to zoning hearing for other requirements, other variances they might look for within, or even currently R2, if it's RA. And then they're going to have to go through the whole land development ordinance and our, you know, the planning commission. So this is simply defining what you can build there, not how you're going to build it, how you're going to subdivide it, how you're going to set it back, how you're going to park it, plant trees. None of that is part of this process. This is just defining what you can do there.
Right. So again, just to clarify what Steve just said in terms of what the process could look like, this is simply saying, this is the portion of the zoning ordinance that applies to this lot. The developer would have to go to the zoning hearing board for approval if they can't meet those requirements that are in the zoning ordinance. So there's point one, where if this passes, you can come in and you can present your cases about why or why not certain things should be allowed or shouldn't be allowed in, in terms of whether they get an, an approval to waive that requirement. From zoning, then it would go to land development. And you would have the land development process, which is all of the, all of the other requirements about how the land is actually developed, the placement of the buildings, how far they're set back, that kind of thing. There's all of these different requirements through this process that the developer is, and when I say the developer, the, the land owner, this is a country of private property rights. I mean, again, I told you earlier, I had to face this in my own community, where I was watching a farm that was slated for development. Private property rights in this country are granted, and we can only limit those so much. We can't tell somebody, you can't build on your land. We can't do that. So I sympathize, and I hear all of your concerns, but, you know, Bob, you say we would not be up here. We're here because we're serving our community. And we all have our own concerns as well. So it's a, it's a tough position to be in, okay? I just want to say, we hear you. We're balancing a lot of different things. We're balancing the need for housing in our region. There is a extreme shortage of housing in our region.
It's, as I'm looking at the zoning map, I almost wish you could pull this up also, Rob. I mean, it's, it's really expanding what I believe many of you live in right now and is in that zoning. And I'm saying this to council, just so council knows what the, bear with me, pulled the map, the, the folks who live in Sussex and Amberly, they're in the RA zoning that's being requested tonight.
That's right. Sussex and Amberly are already zoned in the way that this is being petitioned to be reasoned.
This is being petitioned to develop what a lot of the folks I heard tonight currently live in.
Right.
Again, I'm assuming everybody has looked, looked at the zoning.
Brad.
Assuming everyone has looked at the zoning map. But this is, that's that development. That's where they all, that's where a lot of the residents live now. And they're looking at just making this look like what many of them live in.
We've got a couple people lined up to speak. So go ahead, name and address, please.
Brad Bergman, 301 Linden Street. I just, I don't have a dog in the fight either, like my friend up here. But I just wanted to say that I live right across from the Gible Apartments. to say that I live right across from the Gible Apartments. You know, the people there, I've never had any issues. I, I don't understand the characterization. I mean, they have their own parking lot. I assume something similar would be like this. They might park on the street, sometimes they do there. But, you know, in comparison to the apartment, my father, he lives at 412 Hensley Street. I encourage you to check out his neighbor who owns his home. It's quite a dump, so, you know, just because you own it doesn't mean that you care or respect it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
My name's Sandy Jaeger. I live at 17 Amberly. I guess my concern is the traffic, the congestion. And I know you said that Amberly and Sussex, and I believe the apartments, Homestead are already RA.
Not the apartments. Not the apartments. The apartments are R2, but we are looking to amend that to, so that they are in compliance with the zoning of the district within which they...
Look, you're very...
Okay, so Sussex...
Standards, even though it was prior to the zoning.
So Sussex and Amberly are already RA and high density, so it would fit in. But at some point, you have to stop with the high density zoning. Lincoln's R2, let's, let's let them fit into that, you know? Why expand the high density as opposed to the R2? It's, there's already too much traffic on that little road. Like they said, it's a dead end. Kids are running back and forth, cars are going up and down. This is going to add, if you have 10 or 11 townhomes, you could be talking 20 to 22 more cars. People have, you know, two cars per family. That's a lot more traffic, and that road cannot handle it. Now, with everything that's there, plus the shoe factory that has events and people coming in and out, you know? It's a dead end street. So I'm opposed to the high density as well.
Thank you.
Could, could I be so bold as to call on Mike Smith? Would you like to add any two cents to this conversation? You do have a dog in the fight, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Is there anything specific?
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like for you to speak to it, not only as a planning commission member, but as, as deputy.
Yeah, so I'll start with the planning commission part. I mean, I think Elijah did a good job of summing it up. I mean, with the comp plan process that was, I mean, 24 months long, all those different meetings, this parcel has been part of, shall I say, the package of parcels that was considered for the high density rezoning. And this parcel, you know, Mary asked the question about why the petition? Because the other parcels that are much larger, we've put a lot more effort into from the sense of making, because they're larger, a lot more could happen there. This parcel has always been part of that grouping, just because the idea was that they would all get done at the same time. But we were never focused on this parcel because it, we felt as a planning commission, and if any of my other planning commission members are here, I invite them to come up and join me, but speaking on their behalf, it was always very simple, we felt, because we were going from six to 10 or 11. So we were not, I understand that that is a higher density, but we felt that the numbers were, were not obnoxious at all. You know, and I don't want to put Scott on the spot, but from an engineering standpoint, I understand the traffic concerns, but those five or six extra cars, they're not going to be together. Like, there's not this six car parade that travels around at the same time. That's, that's not how it works. So yes, there may be more traffic with 11 units as opposed to six, but it's going to be one or two extra cars an hour at most. And I think Scott would tell me the math actually doesn't even work out to those round numbers. So that's, that, I think, is the planning commission perspective. Hopefully that answers that. From emergency services perspective, I mean, this is, this is, this is not a burden. I mean, we, we deal with this kind of stuff, density, long hose lays. I mean, quite honestly, like accessibility to this area would be fine. There's plenty of water pressure, there's, so emergency services standpoint, there would be no concern. Now, we've not seen an actual plan, so I can't comment on that, but I'm simply commenting on six duplexes versus 10 or 11 townhouses. That's, we do that stuff all the time.
And given the constraint of a dead end?
Uh, the constraint of the dead end, again, is not, we, I mean, the alley network, the access through the parking lot at St. Luke's, again, these are things that, that we're accustomed to. Quite honestly, in the urban environment, we almost have more opportunity. The parts of our district that are rural, where we're dealing with 1,500 long, 1,500 foot long farm lanes where it's only eight feet wide, those are more of a concern than something like this would be, so.
Mike, thank you. You have always had my utmost respect for your love of this community in many ways, and thank you for letting me put you on the spot.
Mike, before you sit down, I understand that we lost another volunteer firefighter in the last, recently.
Two. Well, two, yes.
One at least because of not being able to find affordable housing.
Both of them.
Both of them because of that.
Correct. Both, both within the last month.
Thank you. We have 82 homeless students in our school district. Well, we...
Can you identify yourself, please? Thank you.
So the question was for the people online, the question is, how will rentals of, address the affordability issue because renting is more expensive than buying? Well, certainly. I mean, my mortgage for my house is very low because I bought it 20 years ago. My, housing prices have gone up all over. It's a simple law of economics that when you increase supply, hopefully your price comes down. I can't speak to that in great detail. There's, I can't guarantee that the housing costs are going to come down. We can only do what we can do. We don't have a lot of options. One of our options is to increase housing stock. We know that. That is one thing we can do. Hopefully, Mr. Winger will work with his client and try to create some housing that is more in the affordability range. Again, it's private property rights. I believe that there is a large segment of our community that is concerned about the cost of housing. But we just had housing developed out on, in the Sutter Village area where new houses cost $650,000 or something like that. I may be overestimating, but...
They vary, but I'd say they're over half a million, up to around that.
It's ridiculous. So what we're trying to do is increase housing stock so that we are able to provide more housing in a range of housing types, number of bedrooms, the, the, whether they're rentals or for purchase. That's what we're trying to do. We don't know the, we don't know the magic answer to this problem, and if any of you do, please let us know. We are only doing the best we can. We've been paying attention to what people in our community who are working very hard on this issue have been advising, work on your zoning. Accessory dwelling units is a thing that we've been doing here in the borough to try to get more housing units. That's units that somebody might build over their garage, a small addition to their house, things like that. We have been trying to do that to, so that people can have family members move back in with them. We don't know what the solution is, but we know that increasing housing supply should help alleviate a little bit of the price pressure. I'm sorry, Sandy. I wish I had the, I wish I knew the magic answer to this question.
In terms of affordability, the stick potential for R2 and R, the 11 for RA, what, how do you see that? I mean, can you develop affordable housing for, in the R2 for the, the smaller groups?
Can you, Mike, Jim, can you go to the mic, please? Thank you.
You'll be applying more improvement cost to less units, so the cost per unit probably is going to go up because you still have to do stormwater, sanitary sewer, water, parking...
The land, the cost of the land.
Right. So by less units, you're actually unfortunately racing.
I, I was thinking the same thing. Everybody was talking affordability. I mean, we, we don't define that, you know, we can't by zoning. That's, again, not until there's an application.
Rob, do we have anyone from online that cares to speak to this? Thank you.
Okay. Um, anybody else? Yep. Please come up to the mic and introduce yourself and your address. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mary Ellen Guyette, and I live at 2 Amberly Way. 2 Amberly Way sits right at the turnaround with the existing traffic that we have now, with the existing houses that are there now. I'm retired. Many of my neighbors, most of my neighbors are retired. We're at home, we're quiet, the neighborhood is quiet. I have a great visibility of that turnaround. And with the existing housing that's there, it's very regular, that people are coming and turning around. So anybody that lives over there, they're going to head north, and to go back out, they're going to come and turn around. So I'm thinking that this turnaround is going to create traffic problems at the dead end.
Rob, did you say nobody's online?
Um, Elijah, I have a question about the, do we have information related to the site distance and resolution of that issue?
This is the one at West Lincoln?
Right.
Yes, that was the recommendation that was sent this morning from the engineer that I touched on earlier. It's about, I don't have the numbers, it's a little under 300 feet in each direction and would require the removal of four on-street parking spaces, one in front of the shoe factory, and then three going east from the intersection. And like I said previously, regardless of what happens tonight, we're looking at making those changes with both our ordinance and then with our, with the paint out there, since it is a state route, and we want to make sure that that complies with engineering standards.
Okay, so we are looking at going ahead and addressing the issue with the access onto Lincoln in terms of providing a better sight line for people trying to pull out there. The parking, I, I was out there at the site and I didn't see a lot of parking along, along Walnut Street. Do you all who live there have a sense is that people who live in the townhouses and condos back there that are parking on the street? Because it appears that there's adequate parking in the parking lots and at the condos. So I'm curious why the streets are so full of cars if... Yes, I was. Yep. So there's not enough parking for the existing units in the apartments? No? Yeah, if you can just come to the mic, thank you. No. I, do you need her name again? Maybe he does.
I think the parking on Walnut Street is from the one building that is on Walnut Street from Homestead. The other apartments have a little, like cul-de-sac parking lot.
Right. I thought that that's, yeah.
From what I've seen, it's those five or six apartments that are on Walnut Street that park on Walnut Street and turn around on Walnut Street.
Okay.
Are you Kathleen? Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, we are... Unless anybody is prepared to make a motion right now, I think we've all been given a lot to think about.
Mary, I don't know if I feel comfortable voting on this rezoning without really knowing exactly what the plan is, that's what it's going to be built on.
Unfortunately, you'll never. I mean, that's, that's the standard process. It, you won't, somebody could get something rezoned today and not develop it for 20 years now without a plan. That's, that's a typical process.
So, so that was, there, there were some scenarios reviewed at the planning commission meeting. Would you... Okay.
Jim, do you mind coming to the mic and just repeating that, just for the luxury of anyone who might be listening? Because I think that's very important. It's very important to reiterate your point there.
A partnership of local people. Again, I lived in those townhouses across the street. I'm one of those people who used it as transition housing till I could afford to move into a home that I'm comfortable with. Someday I may move back to it. I know there's people at Lyndes Mutual who live in those townhouses at the Homestead. Single women live in those townhouses. They're not negative, ugly, rude people. They are your neighbors. I'm sorry, but some of the comments tonight are inappropriate. They were looking for townhouses to match what's across the street, not an apartment building. We only looked at an apartment schematic because the planning commission was trying to do high density and create as much worker-type housing as possible. Frankly, based on the comments, I would not come forward with an apartment building because we'll never get anywhere. I'll be here for 10 years.
The thing that, just, just so you know, that, that's, this is not abnormal. I've been in the development world for 32 years now doing it.
Can you use your mic?
I'm trying here. Without kissing the mic, I'm trying to get as close as I can. Well, I'm just, I'm, for some of the council members who are not familiar with, this is very common. You can't request an applicant, you know, because they don't really have a plan yet. That's going to have to come through, and they'll have to make sure they're complying with all the zoning requirements, and they might have variance or something there, then they're going to have to come before Mike and the planning commission and the other, and go through a thousand of different things. A lot of things that were discussed tonight, we'll have to go through. I think the key thing is everyone has to really study the difference between the R2 and the RA if you haven't already. That's all we're looking at tonight. We are not looking at any of those other things. That is not what's before us. I would remind everybody, and I've been jotting notes here, you know, as Mike shared, this is an area, and we've had discussions as council. We've, we've tasked our planning commission with looking at areas within the borough to see what other additional development might happen. You know, that's what a planning committee, commission is supposed to do, is try to look forward to what could happen. They have been looking specifically at this area. You guys have heard Mary speak many times about the regional comp plan. This does, whether you, we like it, residents like it, does align with the comp plan that we've been talking about. The county, and Mary will speak, you know, for hours about this, has been pushing all municipalities across the county to have higher density, you know, so that you're not building across all the agricultural lands is, is their push. If you look at our zoning map, and if you haven't, I have it up on my screen here, this is the biggest area of RA zoning within the entire borough. There's a lot of, you know, the R2, but this one, this, this development that many of the residents love is the biggest RA in the whole area. It would be odd for an applicant to say, I want RA out here... It would be odd for an applicant to say, I want RA out here in the middle of nowhere. I'm just saying, the areas, but this is directly adjacent to the biggest congregation land use area of our RA. You got to keep in mind, again, I think the biggest thing we have to think about is it adds apartments, condos, townhouses. You know, that's what I'm trying to go through the differences here. It's developed same as the adjacent neighborhood. Even the departments we're talking about across the street that were developed under the RA standards, even though they're in the R2 zoning, so it's no different than that. And I think Mike's statements that you're going from six units to 10 units, I've heard the term high density used here. We have different zoning areas that would allow what I would consider more higher density, high density, like the Wilbur Apartments. That's what I classify as high density. This is higher than, but it's not high density. It's going from six units to 10 units. And I'm not, I'm just stating, I'm summarizing all of my facts that I've heard through all the various comments here, but I'm just sharing from my experience. I want some of you that have not gone through planning and zoning as much as Mary and I have, that's really what we're looking at. And you won't, unfortunately, you won't have a plan. That comes many steps down the road. But I hate to say, saying no, this goes completely aside from two of the, three of the other things we have been talking about. The comp plan, planning commission discussions, you know, many of those other things, so.
Yeah, come, yep, please come back up.
Again, my name is Barb Hartley. Mary, you had said there's currently 82 students who are homeless and seeking. Why are they homeless? Why can they, is it because they can't afford it? Is it because it's not available? Why is it? And are they only looking for that housing in Lyditz?
So I don't have the answer to that. What I know is that Elijah and I attend meetings with groups who are serving people in need in our community. The social workers from the school district attend those meetings and have reported that there are 82 students who are homeless. Now, the definition of homeless, according to the school laws that define that, it's not that they're living on the street. They may be living in somebody's, with a family member. They may be living in a hotel somewhere. They want to stay in the school district. They're students within this school district, and we have lost families. We've had families who have had to move to other districts because they can't find housing here. So Lyditz is a wonderful community. There is no doubt, Lyditz is a wonderful community, but we are not a community without people in need.
Sure. People are always in need. And I will say that the apartments, the Homestead, they are beautiful, and it's a very slow turnover. So when I first learned of this, that was my positive, was, okay, they take care of the property. My issue is, why do we have to squeeze in more? Six units is plenty for that space. And it is going to be more. I mean, you figure, if there's six units, you have at least six cars. I'm going to bet 12 and maybe more if you have teenage drivers. I leave every morning and I have to go out, and oftentimes I don't have a clear view. I've had a lot of close calls. And it's just like, I like when it's dark, at least I can see headlights, but at some point, there's going to be an accident. It is a concern. Go during the evening, when I come home from work, there's cars parked. Most of them are the Walnut residents, but there are people who live back in the apartments who also park on the street. I don't know if, do they have a two-space, you know, max, and so they're parking overflow, or they just prefer, I don't know. But it is full. And again, I really hate to see those trees come down. I mean, that's, but I just think, it sounds to me like it's going to go. Something's coming in. I say let's leave it as an R2. We're already a high density. I just don't think it's good to be squeezing in more, 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 more. I mean, that's just, but, thank you.
So where I was going to go is that we've heard a lot tonight, and I would be open to postponing a decision on this until the next month if people feel like they'd like a little bit more time to just think it over and process what we've heard tonight. I'm sorry, Jim, if that puts you behind, but I think we've heard a lot of things from people tonight. I feel like council, this is a big decision, and council needs time to think about all the things that you've said tonight. Take a look at the property, so.
I would suggest look at the property, look at the zoning map, study the R2 versus the RA, you know, talk to all the council people, study that and truly understand the differences. And like I said before, Mary, I've said, that's really all you're studying. It'll say, here's a list of permitted uses in both of those. That's the biggest difference you're, that we're being asked tonight. We're not being asked about trees, setbacks, layout of parking, any of that. That comes later.
So what would be the process going forward with decision-making?
It would come before council next month.
Yeah, you could essentially make a motion to table it, or just by consent decide to table it, and we'll place it on the agenda for next month. I'll re-advertise so that you can take action on the ordinance. We don't necessarily have to have another public hearing, but you can always act on it next time. Or if everyone feels we need another public hearing, we can have one. I just need to know that now so we can advertise and do all of that. But at this point, this is the public hearing that is required for the ordinance. You can table it, and then you can take action at the next month's meeting.
If somebody feels compelled to make a motion tonight, you're welcome to do that as well. My recommendation would be that we postpone, process what we've heard tonight, perhaps sit down with Elijah, have him help walk you through some of that.
Is everyone comfortable with postponing it?
Yes.
I can tell there's a lot of questions just up here.
I would be ready to make a decision, but I'll go with the council's. Council's.
I would rather everybody up here has studied the information relevant to making the decision. And if you don't understand it, obviously Elijah is an expert in this, so you can ask him to explain some of these different things to you, so you fully understand the decision that you're making.
Yeah, I've done that. I'd be prepared to, I really appreciate the comments from the audience and the rationale that they've used to help us understand where they're coming from, so, but I will, whatever the council wants to do.
So I'll move to table until next month?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to table is approved.
I'd just like to reiterate, Jerry.
That's ultimately, I guess that depends whether council feels that we need additional testimony, or if they're just going to take the testimony that's been received tonight and make a decision. So that's ultimately their decision.
That's a good point. Do we, do you, does the council, I mean, we've heard from, I had 17 different people that I at least, I think that's what I have here.
I prefer to err on the side of letting people speak, so I would, I would be open to continuing the hearing next month, and you're all welcome to come back. I also strongly encourage you to go to the planning commission meeting next week. It's a week from today, right? A week from today, 7 o'clock in this room, and that is where they're having conversations, in-depth conversations about these differences between R2 and RA, and it's around the other parcels predominantly, but the parcels around you are also affected, will be affected because they are part of the whole area around this particular lot that is being considered and has been proposed and adopted by council to be rezoned in terms of the policy document, which is the Strengthening Community 2030 Comprehensive Plan. So I encourage you to go to strengtheningcommunity2030.org. I think it's .org, .com, .com.
It's on our website. You can go to the plan from our website under planning.
Yeah, and, and take a look at that. If you have questions about the area, Elijah's here, and he's happy to sit down with you and go over what those amendments will look like, because ultimately, there is a larger area up there. It's already developed. It's the places where you are living now, if you're in the Homestead Apartments or along Lincoln Street there, where we'd like to be able to rebuild, let's say there was a fire where you are, and all of that got destroyed, we'd like to be able to rebuild that back basically with the same density that you have there. And I'll just say Lancaster County is such a special place. We've got really wonderful natural lands, which some of you may get out and enjoy. We've got farmland or agricultural land. This is the way we save those places. So while it's nice to have a green space in your backyard, if we want to save farmland, and if we want to save those large tracts of woodlands, we have to afford for housing in our built environments. And the best way to make it affordable is to build it where the services are, where there's water, where there's sewer, where there's streets. If we have to keep extending out into suburban areas, it drives up the cost of development and it eats up our precious farmland.
Okay, so we've got a.
We've got a motion on the table.
Yeah, I'd say, no, but the motion needs to be modified to, if you want, if your motion is to keep the public hearing open.
Can we open a public hearing again next month?
I would continue this one, since it's the same subject. That way we don't have to deal with the 30 days of informing them, more timing. Everything else works. I don't have to send out letters to everyone again. It's essentially all the notification. I will put one more notice in the record, but hopefully everyone watching, everyone here, will be here next month.
So I move that we postpone the decision and continue the hearing until next month.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Okay. Thank you all.
And I encourage you to stay for the presentation on rental inspections.
I encourage you to stay until 11 o'clock when we're done with all of it.
No, I encourage you to stay for the, if you're concerned about rentals, you should stay for the rental inspection hearing, or presentation.
All right, let's move to, bear with me. Item 1C, Raspberry Lane subdivision. Elijah?
Yes, there you go.
Do you guys have copies of the plans? I have paper copies if you want them.
I will, I will take a paper copy, though.
The plan is on the shared drive as well.
Rob, going to pull that up?
Right. Like the big size, can see it better. Thank you.
When is it, Elijah? October? Okay, I'm Kevin Sapp from Trimble Surveyors. I'm here on behalf of the owners of 221 Raspberry Lane. 221 Raspberry Lane is located just north of the house that's being built, along South Cedar Street, to the north and west. The owners are proposing to subdivide their existing 1.26 acre property into two separate lots, however, they are not proposing to do any improvements on the property at this time. In the event that improvements will happen, future planning will be provided at that time. We are asking for several waivers, and we have addressed or working on addressing the review comments. Therefore, we would be asking for conditional approval of the plan. We have received conditional approval from the planning commission. They can go through the waivers or the review comments or whatever you would like.
If you could, please just touch on the waivers.
Okay, yep. The first three waivers, to show existing contours, show features within 200 feet of the property, and to submit like stormwater reports, traffic studies, are of minor nature and really don't pertain to this plan because no improvements are being proposed. If in the future, when improvements are being proposed, we will provide those items. We're asking a waiver of the shade tree requirement. We are, I think right now, we would need to provide one shade tree, but we're proposing to provide that at a later date when the property is improved. And we are asking for one more. There's a stormwater width waiver that we're asking for. On the drawing, there's an existing stormpipe that's on the property, but it's not, not all of the pipe is on the property, so we're just asking for 10 feet from the center of the pipe. Typically, you would ask for 20, but since not all of the pipe is on the property, we're just asking for 10.
Elijah, do you have anything to add?
The stormwater pipe is massive, so us getting an easement over it is great. As Charity touched on a few months ago, this is actually the drainage from pretty much the southwest portion of the borough through the Merribean Cemetery Linden Hall. So us getting it, I've literally been in this pipe, it is huge, so a great thing. The other thing that I would touch on is there was a discussion to basically close the existing driveway access and put sidewalk in. There will, the landlord, I think, was willing to do that now, even before things were approved. The condition that they requested is that they essentially defer the fee and lose to when it's developed, if it's developed in the future. Our requirement of the ordinance is that they have to come up with an agreement that satisfies our attorney, and I believe they're working towards that, so.
Okay.
For residential development, correct.
The existing total lot, if I'm reading this correctly, is only 1.29, 259 acres? How many total acres is the current lot as it stands? Okay. What I just read rounded up.
And this lot would support the development of one house, but it's not being proposed for development, right?
Correct. And that's noted on.
Immediately adjacent to the one that's being built right now.
And we have notes on the plan, I'd say, when it, when it's.
Are there any questions from the audience? Rob, anybody online?
No.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application for the subdivision of 221 Raspberry Lane with the waivers as specified.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved. All right. Lori, what you've been waiting for to get up on stage, speak to the rental inspection program.
I'm going to have the help of Rob. He's going to bring up some, some documents too as I talk, and I just have everything typed out, so I didn't memorize it, so I'm just going to read from it and then I'll take questions afterwards.
Thank you Lori.
Yes.
So can you just introduce yourself real quick and tell people your title?
I am Lori McIntarfer. I'm the zoning officer and I do the rental inspections and property maintenance and all kinds of stuff. And I've been with the borough, this is my 23rd year.
Thank you Lori.
So we started, this is about the residential rental program that the borough started back in 2013. Um, there were continued calls from tenants with maintenance issues. The borough was unaware of the number of rentals and we were also concerned for the EMS responders based on the conditions of the rentals. And there was a, also a greater number of disturbance calls from rentals than from owner occupied homes back then. There are, there were two years of discussions with an approximate 10-person committee that included, um, the then chief of police, some council member, I think there were two, zoning hearing board member, Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs member, the borough manager and other staff members. The enabling ordinance was effective on July 1st, 2013, so the registration year runs from July 1st through June 30th. Currently there are 1,214 rentals registered. Somebody had asked how many there were. Um, and these also include short-term rentals and various accessory apartments not being used, um, for family members. The census shows that currently there are a total of 3,765 residential uses in the borough, so about a third of the residential uses in the borough are rentals. I originally developed the database of rental occupied housing from the water sewer billing system, and then I continue to update the system from the county assessment records. So it's very fluid. For each utility account where the owner's mailing address was different from the property address, I assume these were rentals or occup, or possible rentals. I receive a list from the county assessor's office monthly with property sales and purchases and follow up with these by sending a postcard to the listed owner, the new one, asking them to respond if the property will be used as a rental. If a family member will be living in the rental, I do not require them to register the rental, they have to let me know that, but consider it financial planning purposes, yet tenants would still have to follow the section for disruptive conduct and duties of the occupants under the rental ordinance. Um, they were sections 501 and 601, or they could receive a violation notice under the rental ordinance, even if it's not a registered rental, still kind of viewed as one. I use my zoning and building permit software to track the registrations and inspections. So, Rob, are you keeping up? Um, yeah, the, the procedure he has up there right now, registrations are required every year, along with a registration fee of $78 per unit to be paid between July 1st and October 30th. So the registration and the payment comes at the same time. Reminder notices are mailed to each tenant occupied property owner or agent around mid-June because the registration is between July and October, so I send out a reminder to everyone. The owner or agent completes the registration and returns it along with the fee, a letter, and new yearly registration is then mailed to the owner agent. So I close out the existing rental, um, document and then I create a new one for all the 1,214 new rentals every year. Okay, so on to inspections. The borough divided, the boroughs divided into three sections, the same as the trash collection sections. Each tenant occupied unit must be inspected once every three years. Rob will put us a copy of the way the boroughs divide, yeah, divided up on the screen. There it is. Um, let's see. Notice of rental inspections stating which section is listed on the same reminder letter that I send in mid-June. Notations stating section being inspected and if a rental located in that section, the inspection is due that year by the end of December. So my notice would say, we are currently inspecting section two this year. If your unit is in section two, once I receive your fee, you receive a letter that says you're now okay to continue to call code administrator, and I'll go through that here. Um, let me see, where was I? When the yearly payment of $78 is received, I finalize the previous rental permit and create a new rental registration permit and instruct the owner or agent by mail to schedule an inspection with our third-party inspectors, code administrators, by no later than December 31st. I maintain a shared Excel file that I keep up to date to let code administrators know when registration fees have been paid, allowing them to schedule the inspections. So the, the letter instructs the owners and agents to call code administrators specifically, and so they know with our shared file whether I have received that fee or not. Code administrators provides me with inspection reports for each rental inspection performed. If deficiencies are identified, I notify the owner or agent and they have 30 days to correct the deficiency and schedule a follow-up inspection with me at no charge. If all is approved, the owner or agent is notified of the approval status. I work with all rental unit owners to gain full compliance with inspection approval. Violation notices are sent as needed if I don't, if the 30 days goes by and I haven't heard back. So this, on to what is inspected. I have a list that I send out to those new rental units. Rob has a, it's a, a list that basically, um, says what we inspect, and it's mostly life, health and safety items, such as smoke detectors and locks on windows and doors, no open wiring, making sure handrails are on the stairs. And this list was developed from originally the property maintenance code, but we didn't reference any property maintenance codes in our list except for the height of handrails and where to put the smoke detectors, because that is important and part of the, you know, uniform construction code. Um, other property maintenance issues that are not listed under the rental inspection ordinance are dealt with under the property maintenance code. So I kind of have two codes to go by for issues of property maintenance. Typical violations found would be missing or non-operational smoke detectors or evidence of hoarding, and this is more recently. I think when we first started, there were a lot of smoke detector missing issues. There were a lot of, um, hot water heater missing, um, um, blow-off lines, basically they, you know, they need to be put on there when they're installed, so there were probably things installed that didn't have permits, maybe, that's what I'm guessing. But we went around and got through all of those, so they're all, it's all now safe. Um, sometimes there's leaks, um, broken or cracked windows, lack of cover plates, exposed wiring, just things that, you know, could happen throughout the year, but this is a three-year period, so every three years is the inspection. So our ordinance has a section about disruptive conduct too for tenants, and it gives a definition, and if an officer, police officer is called to an incident and determines that it meets that definition, then it goes to the chief and the chief verifies that and a notice from the police department is given to me, and then I follow up with the owner or the agent. Whereas before we had this inspection, the owners weren't notified at all if there was a police call, if, if police came to any particular property. So now we're notifying, notifying the owners and they are very happy to be notified about these kind of things because they really do want to know about them. If an occupant or a tenant receives up to three disruptive conduct reports verified by the police department within one year, the owner or the agent must be actively evicting the tenant or the owner or agent will receive the fine, actually the, the agent through, the owner through the agent would receive the fine. So it's always, the onus is on the owner. And could lead to a DJ action if not taken care of.
What's DJ?
Uh, district justice. To date, and this has been 12 years, I've had two tenants that I've had to work with the owners who have been happy to file at the district justice to have their tenants removed.
Two tenants over 13 years, did you say?
Yeah, 12. We're, we're going to be starting our 13th in July. The owners filed paperwork at the DJ's office and a hearing was held and it was not necessary for me to attend. That's simply between the owners and the tenant and the DJ. So I had Rob pull up, I don't know if anybody was paying attention to any of the copies of stuff, but that's basically what I have. And when I do have new rentals identified, I send out registration forms, I send out the list of what we look for, I send out, um, a portion of the zoning or the rental ordinance that talks about disruptive conduct, the conduct for the tenant, so that the owners can just hand it to them when they move in. Um, and that seems to be helpful. And we've had very little, um, disruptive conduct anymore. Um, chief will agree with that. It all, it all happened, I think, in the first year. I think it was a, it was a shock to all those tenant or owners that, you know, were being notified if there was issues. Um, and even for violations in the apartments, you know, a lot of them, the smoke detectors weren't even there or, you know, a lot of them missing batteries or something, but, um, the owners are very happy. I think that we keep in touch with them if there are issues with the tenants, whereas they weren't notified before. So that's what I have and I have questions now, I mean, if anybody has questions next, I do my best to answer them.
Well, I, um, so Tania and I are, um, members of the zoning and code enforcement committee of council and work closely with Lori, and renters are an important part of our community. And, um, knowing that this program has been in existence for 12 years, our neighbors, Warwick Township are just beginning a rental inspection program. Um, other communities are slowly beginning to adopt them, but we were really a leader and I wanted to, um, take this opportunity for Lori to brief council on this because I think it's an important program for us to know about. Um, as questions are asked and we beginning talking more and more about housing in the community, um, so that we are prepared to answer people's questions and respond to concerns that people have. It's evident to me that Lori runs a really tight ship and that this program benefits our community as a whole. It benefits tenants who are no longer subject to properties that are not being maintained. Um, and it's also a benefit to property owners who aren't here necessarily to keep an eye on things and to the tenants themselves from public health perspectives and things like that. So, um, with that, I'll just ask if anybody has any questions for Lori. I know it's after nine, so I don't want to take a lot of time, but also be happy to take any questions from the, um, public who's here as well.
And one thing I forgot to mention that I didn't have in my paperwork was if an owner lives further than 50 miles from the property, they need to assign an agent who is within the area so that we have someone close by and we're not trying to find-
Good point.
-the owner if there are issues.
Good. Thank you Lori.
It is a great program. I remember when we implemented it and there was a lot of angst because we were one of the first ones doing it, but as you've shared, many other municipalities are doing it now and feeling the, shall I say, the pain that we felt years ago, because I remember Lori getting a lot of grief from the owners at the time. Yes, change, change is change. Uh, but the, the change ended in a, a positive result that we have now that we, I'd say, cleaning up some problems that others are still dealing with.
Yeah. I just had one question for you Lori. It's the code enforcement officer that does the inspection and that is not you.
Correct.
Who is that?
Code administrators. They're our third-party inspection agency. They're the ones that inspect for the UCC for building permits.
The same ones, like for new buildings, new construction.
Right.
They do that inspection also.
And there's generally one or two of the inspectors that do the inspections throughout the borough.
And they're somehow accredited for some, for that type of service through some government agency?
Yes.
They have the, yeah, they, they are, they have to pass, they have to get their certifications.
Okay. Specifically off-
They have to understand the UCC.
Thank you.
Right, right.
I think we have a, at least one question or comment.
Sorry.
He's so much more comfortable on that mic. Does anybody ever notice when Chris Draper, like, he knows what he's doing?
I just want clarity on one of your numbers Lori. Um, you referenced, I think it was like 1,300, oh, by the way, Chris Strayer, Front Street. Um, you referenced, I think, 1,300. I feel like the terminology used was rental-
1214 rentals, so that would be the unit.
Correct, so I, I just want clarity. So for example, the, the units behind the Wilbur, does that count as one unit or that it counts all those units in there?
Yeah, it, it, one has, um, 84 and one has 85.
Okay, great.
So they are each individually inspected.
Great, thank you.
Now it'd be same thing like any of the old, not even those, I'm just saying there's lots of units within streets. I lived in a unit, a very small apartment on Orange Street, but it was two units and a very small 1,800 townhome.
Right. And we only inspect residential.
Right.
Okay, thank you so much Lori. I really appreciate you and I appreciate the time that you took to put your presentation together. She can, she can do this stuff in her sleep, but talking is a whole nother thing. Thank you Lori, you passed.
Lori, now you can go.
You can go Lori.
Is that raining or do I actually hear the AC finally kicking in?
I think it's raining.
Wow.
I didn't, I was hoping it was the diffuser blowing.
My garden needs it.
Is that on Rob?
It was, it was freezing in there.
Yeah, what happened?
Turn it off.
It's on, did you just crank it? Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought. I was looking over there, I got toasty about 10 minutes ago.
Okay, now we can start.
Let's, we are skipping item number two, which is the ordinance, which is what we tabled. Uh, three, there are no resolutions and we have two agree-
I really appreciate you and I appreciate the time that you took to put your presentation together. She can she can do this stuff in her sleep. But speaking is a whole nother thing. Thank you, Lori. You passed.
No, you can go.
Go, Lori.
Is that rain or do I actually hear the AC finally kicking in? I think it's rain. I was hoping it was the diffuser blowing.
My garden needs.
Is that on, Rob?
It was, it was freezing in there.
Yeah, what happened?
Turn it off.
It's on. Did you just crank it? Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought. I was looking over there. It got toasty about 10 minutes ago. All right.
Now we can start.
Let's, we are skipping item number two, which is the ordinance, which is what we tabled. Three, there are no resolutions, and we have two agreements. And let me go back to my notes. Ken, I believe they're both on you, 575 and 576.
That that's correct. Good evening, everybody. We have two agreements. The first is 575. It is speaking about Norfolk Southern's lease amendment. And um this is about a piece of property that is located inlet. It's it's right along North Water Street, um, between Klein Lane and North Lane, and it's right along the railroad. And it's about 0.93 acres. And so what we're doing here is we're we're making some changes to an existing lease agreement. Amendment formalizes rental adjustments based on inflation metrics while ensuring compliance with the existing lease agreement structure. Tenant, which is Lititz Borough, remains responsible for timely payments and maintaining insurance coverage. So they're they're asking for an increase in monthly rent to the sum of $2,275. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I apologize if you did say they're asking an increase to 2275. It's currently what?
Um, I don't have that in front of me, but I think it was right around 1,900. Is that right, Rob?
It's about a $400 increase. Our original lease amount was 1,455. There was an increase or to that over the years. This is essentially catching up with inflation. Norfolk Southern is doing this with all of their subleases.
Okay. I'm just trying to do the math of what, 400?
Uh, do you need a motion?
I'll do it. I move to approve agreement 575 where Norfolk Southern lease agreement with the borough of Lititz is effective as of April 1st, 2025.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Thanks, folks. Second agreement is 576, and this is uh an agreement with Kenview and the discharge agreement that we've structured with them. Uh, real quick, the summary here is this agreement formalizes Kenview's wastewater discharge process, ensuring regulatory compliance while maintaining Lititz Borough's sewer system integrity. The agreement also outlines Kenview's obligations regarding pre-treatment and renewal. The we have some some good teammates over at Kenview. They do follow all the local, state, and federal regulations. They've also installed a a pre-treatment system that includes wastewater pre-treatment of including a lift station, an equalization facilities, process control and monitoring systems, and pH neutralization facilities. So they're well-equipped to pre-treat anything that that would go into our our system. We have a great relationship. We'd like to uh make this agreement into effect until March 31st of 2028. Any questions for myself or or Rob?
Ken, this is Jerry. Was has there been any other alternative explored for this waste rather than going into the into our system?
That's a great question, Jerry. I don't know that there's an alternative. I know that the that there's been a lot of work in the pre-treatment uh facility that they have inside the inside their plant, which I think has been in place for a number of years, and it's met all the the regulations and requirements. And even I think we've had INTEC look at it as well. So but I don't know about an alternative, Jerry.
All right, thanks.
I don't know that they would have a discharge point, even if they would treat it because there's no water body.
Okay, any other questions from the team? I'd like to make a motion to approve agreement 576, which grants authorization for Kenview to discharge allowable industrial waste after pre-treatment from its manufacturing facility into the borough's sewer system.
Second.
A motion and a second in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, approved. All right, thank you, Ken. Now we're moving into the council members forum. Stay right up to the mic there, Ken, and go ahead with wastewater.
Thank you, Steve. I think Doug Zook is representing Infomark tonight. We have.
He's here.
Good evening.
Hey, Doug.
I'll be brief. The annual drinking water quality report uh was completed and posted on the borough's website. Uh, the first quarter Susskind River Basin uh commission report was also submitted. And uh the, just to let you guys know, the water plant did receive the area-wide optimization program award for 2024. Moving on to finance, uh, we're currently, for the month, $33,803 over budget for the month and $57,047 over for the year to date. Now, just to remind the council, um, we are expecting uh a lot of overages first quarter of the year, every year, due to high sludge production and having to run the dryer, which takes a lot of utilities, a lot of chemicals. Um, we're slightly over in in the maintenance department too because of annual inspections and maintenance also. So we do expect that to to even out throughout the year. Capital projects, uh, the final 2024 capital project that's left over was well pump three. Uh, we finally got a date from PPNL to depower the line that runs over the well, and that will be completed hopefully on June 2nd. Been a long time coming.
Yeah.
Um, we have uh two projects scheduled. Uh, the rebuild of the high service pump is scheduled for uh May 29th. Uh, and the new plant flow meters are scheduled to be installed on May 8th. Um, and the LED conversion for the three rooms at the water plant is currently underway. Uh, capital projects for the wastewater plant, uh, the centrifuge, main and backdrive motors, and the filter rebuild were completed in March. Um, and at the April 24th meeting last week, uh, the Authority Board approved funding for the aerobic digester blower rebuild and also the nitrogen internal return check valve repair. Uh, both plants were in compliance with all parameters. The water plant uh flow was down 2% from uh February and the water, the that was the wastewater plant. The water treatment plant flow was uh down 5.5%. Uh, we had 11 emergency callouts or after-hours callouts, I should call them, six of which were nuisance alarms, which we're working on taking care of. We had one power outage, two motor faults, and two high-level alarms in the sludge tank. As I said, we're producing a lot of sludge right now, and we are fully staffed. And that's all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Congratulations on the award again this year.
Thank you.
Ken, it does all look like there's any questions here.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, Doug. Thanks for addressing the finances, and I have confidence that you and the team will will be in the in a good spot at the end of the year. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Infomark report for the water and wastewater treatment facilities for the month of March.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Steve, I have just a couple more items of business. It'll go quickly. Uh, I'd like to uh just announce the Manhole Six and Seven bid award has been recognized. We evaluated four competitive bids. INTEC um has viewed Wexcom as the uh the winner for the uh Manhole Six and Seven replacement. The total bid uh base cost was $182,375. Based on industry knowledge and prior work experience, Wexcom uh is our choice and will be moving forward with this project. Any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion uh to approve Manhole Six and Seven replacement project to Wexcom in the amount of $182,375 to authorize INTEC to issue a notice reward and the associated contract documents.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, motion approved.
The second award to announce is the Front Street Water Main and Meter Vault uh replacement project. We again had four competitive bids. INTEC found Dolly Construction bid to be complete and accurate and inclusive of all required bonding documentation and signatures. The total base uh bid was $307,790. Uh, based on industry knowledge and work history, Dolly Construction was selected and should be awarded this project. Any questions?
Just, everybody did confirm the scope. I mean, looking at the disparity of the pricing on the other, everything was pretty tight. The the top three are very tight, and then Dolly's 40,000 lower, but we feel good about that.
Yeah.
My business, that scares me.
We we're confident that INTEC uh does have a working relationship with Dolly and through other industry uh recommendations, we think they can do the job for that amount.
Okay, uh, as long as you guys looked at that. No other questions here, Ken?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Front Street Water Main and Meter Vault Replacement Project to Dolly Construction in the amount of $307, uh, $790 in and authorize INTEC to issue a notice award and the associated contract documents.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Steve, real quick, a summary. The Water Sewer Committee met on April 16th. We are are recognizing that a lot of capital projects are in progress and are on schedule. Uh, Mary and I have requested more information for the fluoride data, and Infomark is providing that. We have a meeting uh May 6th to review that, and we'll bring that back before council next month. I think that wraps up that meeting, and the Lititz Borough Authority also met, and we pretty much reviewed the same types of information on April 24th. Uh, MS4 Committee uh did not meet this past month, uh, unless there's something that Mary would like to share.
Nope, no report.
Steve, that wraps up the Subcommittee for Sewer and Wastewater.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Tanaya, Streets of Traffic?
All right, I've got a Green Lake Go bid award as well. Um, the borough received three bids. This is, if you recall, to upgrade the Broad Street intersection. So we advertised, uh, we received three bids. The the bid, the lowest bid is from Her Signal, uh, in the amount of $117,000, $117,830. And we we actually sent this off to our engineer. They took a look at it. They have worked in the past with Her Signal uh lighting, and it's their opinion that they have the expertise and staff to complete this job on time within budget. Do we have any questions? Nope. Okay, I'd like to make a motion uh to approve the Green Lake Go Award in the amount of $117,830 with Her Signal and Lighting.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Is um Mr. Bill Moore here? Nope, all right. So we the borough received a request from Bill Moore. He is the owner of Main Men, and he's asking to place cafe lighting across North Sturgis Lane. So these would be similar to what was installed outside of Collusions. Um, we're operating the same principle. Um, Bill has let his landlord know. He's also, he's very supportive. It will be, Bill will be paying for the power. The contractor would install high, would install this high enough to not interfere with the traffic. And the installer is here, Mr. Stray Lighting. Do we have any questions? And um, did you want to mention anything else?
I think the only other thing, this wasn't done with the Juniper Lane, but we did ask for coverage on the insurance for liability, and he did provide it.
Okay, yes, that's right. Anybody have any questions about that?
Did the Historic Area Advisory Board review this? Is there any implications with it being within the historic district?
I discussed this with Lori. She didn't feel that it was necessary because they're essentially the same thing that was already approved at Juniper, so she felt that it was compliant.
Okay, thank you.
You want to speak on this, Mike?
Yeah, I would just ask that any any motion that you make include a requirement that we review and approve prior to installation. Um, we did that with Juniper. Uh, so I would want to make sure, I want to know what the height is. That's a significant access point for us uh to the apartments and to the rear of those buildings there on East Main Street. So I would want to know the specifics before any work moved forward, if you do decide to approve it.
How do you want to receive that information?
Uh, I mean, if if Stray Lighting is doing the project, they can just do a typical submittal to us, similar to the land development process, uh, just so we can review the height, the connection points, that kind of information.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions? You want to comment, Chris? You're good. All right, I'd like to make, we have to make a motion? Oh, go ahead.
Will the lights be on all night or will they only be on until a certain hour? I am concerned about light pollution and do you know what the intent is? Yes, no? Are they able to be turned on and off?
The ones that are here, they're only.
What are the Collusions ones do?
They're only on when they're open.
My concern is we've got residents living there in those apartments and I don't know. I guess I just, light pollution and just making sure that the residents there are not impacted by the lights outside their apartment. Or at least they've been given some advance notice of that.
Can we do that, Elijah? Let let Mr. Moore.
Like it would be the owner, the applicants.
Right, and the the tenants are also tenants of the same landlord.
Okay.
So, but I can, we can, if council wants, we can table it and I can get that information and get back to you for next month.
Want to do that?
I think it would be a good idea to just.
Okay.
At least ask that he let the tenants there know.
Okay. We're just going to table that till next month? Need to make a motion for any of that? I do. Steve? Okay.
Not typically, but I think with the hearing, it was probably appropriate to do that.
Yeah, for the.
Right, for this, it's essentially, you know.
You're telling Elijah to keep it on the agenda for next month.
Okay. All right, keep moving right along. I've got two special events. One is the July 4th celebration. This is going to be on July 4th, um, with a running time of 11:30 in the morning to 11:30 in the evening. It's going to be in the Lit Springs Park. This is our 208th Fourth of July celebration in the park. So uh, one road closed will be, ooh, and I can't make out this handwriting. I did look at this and I forgot to ask, what street would that be? Market? Maple? Oh, okay. All right, Maple Street. Yep. Okay, and that is the first special event. Anybody have any questions?
They did amend it to to just specify Wentworth and Pine, which are the ones for Lititz Mutual's parking lot.
Okay.
So not a huge impact from a traffic standpoint, but they did reach out to make that.
Okay, perfect. The other special event is the Lititz Rec Center's Pretzel Twist 5K. It's going to be on September 20th from 7:30 in the morning till 10:00 AM. There will be a, this is their 48th annual Lititz Rec 5K. There will be a road closed, but it'll just be the small section of the campus right in front of the actual rec center. So those are the two permits. Anybody have any questions?
Just one question for the July 4th celebration. The July 4th parade would be a separate application?
I think we considered that last.
Did we do that already?
I think we did that one last month.
But that is being held on the same day again this year, correct? Right, okay, thank you. So that will be a road closure just for the parade.
Right.
But not associated with this. Okay, thank you very much.
Maple Street. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 4th um special event as well as the Lititz Rec Center Pretzel Twist 5K. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
I've got one activity permit. This is for the Memorial Day concert. The Langsford Symphony Orchestra is going to be in the band shell of the Lit Springs Park on May 24th, running time from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, 6:30 PM to 9:30, sorry, 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM. This is a free concert to the Lit's community with the Langsford. This is a free concert to the Lititz community with the Lancaster Symphony Orchestra. And that's the only permit I have. Anybody have any questions? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Memorial Day Concert Lancaster Symphony Orchestra in the band shell on July, sorry, on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Second.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
One more I've got here is the, uh, I've got a handicap parking space request. This is for an individual who lives, lives on one forty South Oak Street. He's got a driveway that is sloped, so it's not really conducive for a mechanical lift to get him to his front, front porch. So, a few years ago, the, uh, the borough allowed him to uh, put, put down a walkway that meets straight out to the sidewalk. So he was asking for a parking space, handicap parking space to be right, right, uh, outside of that, um, area that runs off into the sidewalk. So, because he requires a mechanical device to enter and exit his car. So it just makes sense to put it in that area. Anybody have any, uh, questions about that? Nope. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Fitzpatrick's, um, handicap parking space outside of one forty South Oak Street in Lititz. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion approved. Thank you, Tanaya.
Well done, yep.
All right, uh, Ken, back over to you, finances.
Yeah, finance has, uh, four items of business to share with everybody. First, uh, council, you should have a, a financial statement for the month of April in front of you. What you're going to see is we've, um, spent about nineteen percent of our, of our planned, um, or we've collected about nineteen percent of our revenue and spent about twenty-three percent of our planned budget, and this is, uh, this is about what we expected at this time of year. Um, we do expect revenue to climb over the next few weeks as real estate taxes are collected and posted. Uh, currently, the Lititz Borough Financial Audit for twenty twenty-four is complete, but it remains in draft form. Brown Plus is doing an internal, uh, review of that audit, and they'll pass it on to the borough, where, uh, finance will review that on May twenty-third, and then we'll present it, uh, to council for the May twenty-seventh council meeting. Any questions with the financial statement at the moment?
No questions here, Ken.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, April financial statement for Lititz Borough and pay all the invoices.
Second.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Steve, the second item of business is, uh, a police vehicle sale, uh, bid, and that has been identified. Rob McFadden is going to share the details on this police vehicle sale.
Uh, thanks, Ken. Um, three vehicles were sold, uh, two thousand and ten Ford Fusion, two thousand and twelve Ford Fusion, and a two thousand and fifteen, uh, Ford, uh, Interceptor. Uh, the total for all three is thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
Fantastic. Any questions of Rob or the Police Department? I move to approve the police vehicle sale as presented.
Second.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Um, all of council, I'd just like to thank, um, the Church of the Brethren for their generous financial donation in lieu of taxes. We received one this month. Steve, one final thing is, uh, finance is busy. We have, uh, some, really some great topics that we're continuing to work on as a team. We, uh, we've received everyone's capital request, and so we are busy trying to, um, research and identify funding sources for, for our teammates as we get towards budget time. We're also continuing our, our debt education. We continue to study the Lititz Borough debt and other obligations, and we look forward to sharing some of our findings and information at the mid-year financial report in July. Uh, we took our first step in, uh, working on our fund balance policy for the water and sewer funds, got a draft, and it was a productive meeting. Um, and that's the, the quick summary from our, our finance meeting, uh, on April twenty-fifth, and that's, that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, Jerry, moving on to personnel benefits.
Uh, yes, Chairman, I have one, one announcement. I'm sad to announce that Maureen Westcott has resigned from the zoning hearing board. Um, she's resigning because she's moving out of the borough. She has been a member of the zoning hearing board for over ten years, both as a regular member and as an alternate. She was a valued member of the board, especially championing, championing the accessibility needs of people with disabilities. So we're sorry to see her go, but we understand why she's made that decision, and we thank her for her many years of service. So I'm making a motion to accept Maureen Westcott's resignation from the zoning hearing board effective May first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved. Thank you, Jerry. Moving on, uh, anything, Chris, on planning that wasn't very discussed?
Uh, other than just to reiterate, reiterate that the zone, or the Planning Commission meeting is a week from today at seven PM in this very room. All are welcome.
Mary, we've had a, quite a bit on zoning and code, anything else?
No report.
Ken, anything on building and grounds?
Um, just one point, um, I'm deferring to Elijah, who attended the, uh, the Parks Committee meeting. Anything to share with the team, Elijah?
I'll just be quick. We met at the skate park, reviewed the most recent, uh, phase, which is phase three. Uh, Skate Park Association thinks there are going to be two to three more phases. Uh, they may start, uh, outreach to the public to try to maybe change what their original design was back in twenty seventeen, um, based on community feedback. Uh, Parks Committee was supportive. They had a few other requests that the Parks Committee will consider and evaluate for budget requests for this year. And the next Parks Committee meeting is, uh, May nineteenth, I believe. It'll be the third Monday in May, and it's at New Street Park, uh, to hear from neighbors that are interested in suggesting improvements there.
Elijah, quick on the skate park. The two gentlemen that showed up sometime in the past year, have they, did they ever come to any of the parks meetings?
So Nicholas did, um, Ija had to work. So Nicholas was sort of their spokesperson, but he was there with Rob Reed, who was their, our representative from the, the County Skate Park Association.
Okay, just curious.
And just a shout out to Rorres Concrete for donating all the concrete, which has kept the costs down.
They've done a lot of that over the years. Mary, regional plan?
Yeah, just real quick, the, um, full committee for the region met this past week. Um, continuing discussion of individual municipal implementation activities for us, that's the zoning changes. Um, and starting to look at prioritization of other activities. Uh, priority for everyone is, um, getting large employers together to talk about issues of worker housing and also transportation, um, regional transportation. It's been brought to our attention, um, raised issues of things like people up at, um, Rock Lititz who want to be able to get down to the borough, spend their money, um, patronize our businesses and everything, and, but they don't have a way to get down here easily. So, um, that's just one example we heard through the planning process of other issues, but I would say that's probably one of the biggest things. We're going to start moving on. Um, we should see some information soon on a report from the EDC, formerly the Economic Development Company of Lancaster County, on, um, the outdoor recreation economy impacts here to us and and contributions because of all the natural lands in the area, the rail trail, things like that. So anxious to see that kind of information, um, that we can share with you all. Elijah, am I forgetting any highlights that need to be shared tonight?
Nothing need to be shared tonight.
Okay, next month, thank you. And I just want to give a shout out. We had, uh, we've got one of our committee members in the back of the room tonight. Thank you. She's, our, we've got a great committee.
We have two.
Oh, we have two, yes. Jane and Michelle, thank you so much for your contributions. You're really contributing a lot to the, to the process.
All right, that concludes the council members forum. Um, item number six, the engineers report. We have DMAs reporting our packet. Any questions for Scott here? No questions, we're going to move on. Report from the mayor, anything, mayor?
Yeah, just, just one highlight, uh, attended the, uh, opening day exercises of the, uh, Little League. It was their thirtieth anniversary. It was pretty impressive, thirty kids. It was raining that day. Everybody, parents and three hundred kids in the middle school auditorium. It was quite, quite, uh, the, uh, uh, program, and they recognized a lot of people that really put an awful lot of effort into getting the Little League going in Lititz. It was, it was very nice.
I heard you might have thrown out the first pitch.
I did.
Strike?
Yes.
Just so it wasn't one of those embarrassing rolls. Okay. Thank you, mayor. Um, heard it's gone, taking pictures. I forgot. Do you have anything for your last, your, your last, your very last? I was going to say, you're going to drop the mic there?
Yeah, I'm going to drop it, yeah. Like I said, this is my last council meeting. Uh, forty-five years is a long time, and it's pretty unheard of in police work for sure. And I really thank the people and the people I work with. I was kind of sitting down. I went through four police chiefs, Chief Hicks, Fritz, Schertz, and Bill Sees. And I don't know how many councils it's been, probably ten or twelve, and, uh, they've always been, uh, supportive of us, and it's a great place to work. It really has been, and it always, it has been. I say that all the time. Elijah and I talk about that often, that some people real, don't realize how good a place it is to work, and I'm going to miss it. I still haven't adjusted yet. I mean, Friday's my last day, but this is pretty much my last official act. And, but I'm not going anywhere. I want to get involved in the community, and I do appreciate everything. I miss the residents. I miss the people I work with. Uh, but I felt it was just time, you know, after this much time, and, and I'll be sixty-five here in October. I don't feel that way. Uh, but I, I still think I could probably have a number of years to go, but I just said, that's enough of this now, so. Um, my plans, everybody asked me that. I really have any plans. My wife and I are campers. We go out camping a lot. And I'll probably get a part-time job next year because she says I'm not allowed to stay home, so. You know, uh, and, 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 really, I realized May second is my last retirement. That's actually my wife and I's forty-fourth wedding anniversary too, so she gets that, and, uh, had a lot of get-together today, a couple people, the mayor was here, and Rob and Elijah, and, and, uh, Jerry and Christine is here. I appreciate that. They gave me that, and I've, I'm not a guy that looks for recognition. I like to work in the background, get things done, and you have a good police department downstairs, and they're a great bunch of guys and gals. Jared will do a terrific job. You saw his credentials. I remember all that he did there. It was like, holy cow. Uh, but he is very well in tune with the community, and he'll be a great, he's a great addition. Hopefully he stays a number of years too. And, uh, you know, we're up to pretty close to full staff now. Uh, I think you might talk about trying to get somebody else down the road, but you know, with everything going on, you have a great bunch of guys and gals down there, and I'll take a little credit for that. I mean, I really, uh, encouraged them to take training. Uh, you know, I helped work some shifts when they were out training, and a lot of guys came in and he's, hey, chief, can we do this? And, uh, I said, hey, it's a great program to do, so appreciate it. I thank you. I'm not going anywhere. Like I said, I'm still love, I live and love this community. And one, one thing, I lived at two twenty North Walnut for five years, and I didn't get up and say anything, but it was a great place to live. And I know there's at least five people that I know of did exactly, lived there for a few years and bought a house in Lititz. Actually, one was our world famous hockey coach, Bobby Durge, passed away last year. He and I have been friends for years, and so I'm not getting in the middle of the zoning part, but I'm just saying is, they have a great little community up there, and I think it still is, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I appreciate it, and I'll be around, and I know I gave, uh, Rob my, my personal email. If anything needs to be forwarded to me, Jared needs, I'm just a phone call away or a text away, and, and I will always answer it. But thank you again. Thank you for the community that stayed. It's hardly anybody left anymore.
Thank you, chief.
Jerry, I apologize. I was consumed in meetings all day, and I, I missed your, uh, celebration, but it's, uh, amazing, forty-five years, just in any business, to, to stay is, is a, a feat in its own, yet alone in a public service. Uh, so kudos to you for that, and again, you think through, like you said, the number of council, the chief, you've gone through. That, that's amazing. You start to go through, and you said there at the end, um, again, you have a hard time giving yourself the credit, but yes, we have one of the best police departments, and that often starts with the leader. I mean, you, you've helped create that. You've helped recruit it. You've helped develop people like Jared, so we, we had a great transition, so that, that is a credit to you and your leadership and your time as the chief, and just your time, forty-five years here. You've impacted, I'm sure, more than just Jared and the others, so. All right, um, we have Elijah and Rob's report. Any questions for Elijah? Or anything you want to share other than in your report, Elijah?
I mean, it's in my report, but still working on redistricting. Uh, we did a first pass, got pretty close. We're seeing if we can tweak it, and once we do, we'll touch base with Mary and Tanaya. The other thing is, since I always update, uh, nothing on the runabout line this week. We're still waiting on that, or this month, still waiting on a construction agreement.
Thank you.
Rob, anything you want to share?
Hey, uh, just two quick things. We're making great progress on the website and also with our certified safety committee, and everything else is in my, in my report.
Okay. I mean, if anybody had questions, you would have opposed either of them, so we're moving beyond that. Uh, item number nine, any public comments on issues that have not been discussed to this point? Chris, come on up.
Just, just quick clarity. Mary, are you looking for, back to the light thing, are you looking for, like, them to notify the residents? I just can go back, and my guys are going to be like, hey, what happened? I'll be like, I don't really know. It was getting late. And so I just want to understand what you're looking for, just so I can tell them this is how it's moving forward.
I'm just, I, I would like for the residents who live there to be
Notified.
notified that there's going to be permanent lighting out there that they're not used to, I guess. I don't know how much of an impact that lighting will have on them, and maybe they appreciate it. Um, I just am a little concerned about light pollution.
Right.
So if the lights were going to go off at, say, ten o'clock or eleven o'clock, I think that really may be a good idea. I don't know what the intention is. It's, this was all kind of new to me tonight, so I guess I just wanted, want people who are going to be impacted by it there directly to be notified, and I think it, I would put it back on the owner, or the, who's requesting it, or the, the, um, merchant who's requesting it.
Okay.
To just make sure that people in the, in the area are supportive of it.
If you're going to be the ladies on it, just the owner, proof that the owner informed the resident.
Yeah.
So they have a chance to say, wait a minute.
If I'm going to go do something in my neighborhood that's not on my property, I should talk to my neighbors about it.
The only difference, yeah, but the only difference is the owner
Is the.
is the owner. They're, they're just tenants to the property. That, that was, that's the only thing, and I, I apologize for waiting till the end. I wasn't sure when to, but I was like, well, wait, he owns both of those buildings, so at the end of the day, he, he ultimately has.
He's the one that's going to get the complaint.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
And it's next to a parking lot that I'm not sure how well lit it is at night?
I, I think it'll actually be beautiful. Like, when we talked about what we did here, I, I said, hey, I think this is probably, honestly, I'm surprised it took this long. I thought this was going to be something that would happen more, because I think, you know, it would look good in some of these other places. I think it would look good on the other side of Main Street as well, and that.
Yeah, they did it over here to draw attention, because it's a habit, but it did, I mean, that was.
It lights it up nice and.
It was a pretty dark alley, as is that over there.
Correct, so.
But I do think it'd be a common courtesy, just a simple notification to the tenants there, that this is going to happen. And the clarification with, um, Bill at Main Men as to his intention of how long the lights will be on.
Yep.
Just real simple.
Yeah. Is there, from a council standpoint, is there a desired time, though? Because what I don't want to do is have it keep getting pushed down months down the road, because then they come back and, hey, he's saying he wants to do it till one AM, and you guys are like, well, hang on, we, now we got to push another month because we want to go to eleven P. And I.
I would ask if we find out the way it is here, because we can't force that to be different than here.
And, and base it off of what?
Yeah.
what Jim's doing over here.
Yeah.
Yep, sounds good.
And I would say that it's not really council's decision. It's more the tenants and the people who are going to be directly affected. If it's important to them that the lights be off by midnight for whatever reason, or whatever that is, then that would be, my guess, would be more important than what the council thinks. Would you say the, you have a simple notice to them that these lights are going to go up? It's the intention to leave them on until X time? And then wait to see if there's any response? No?
I'm looking at Steve.
I'm, I just want to make sure that we're doing the same both ways, so we can't require more stringent there than there, um, because if I'm that owner, I'm going to. Because if I'm that owner, I'm going to basically, wait a minute, let these guys do this. So I would rather find out what
Jim does, yeah.
what are they on over there?
Yep.
I think the simple notification to the residents, the, the owner still has to make a notification to all the residents, even though they, he's the one that's going to get the complaint and say, hey, I just want you guys all to know, there's, light's going to be going up out here.
Yep.
So then he can get an earful if they really don't want that. And that'll be his decision then if he wants to continue to get that from the tenant, so.
Yep, all right, sounds good.
And then coordinate with Mike and make sure you can put them where they're going to work.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that part. An arm wrestle will be good.
Okay. All right, with no other public comments, item number 10.
Motion to adjourn, second.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.